I'm gonna call the Springfield City Council Ward Session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Wetter.
Here.
Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Blackwell.
Here.
Councillor Doyle.
Here.
And Councillor Pictionary.
Here, thank you.
Alright, we've got a couple items to see. The first one is Planning Commission interviews with Sandy Belson. Sandy, why don't you come on up? And then hang on for a second, because we're gonna let Michelle go.
Yes, due to my relationship with this interviewee, I am going to.
Mayor and Council, my name is Sandy Belson. I'm the Comptons of Planning Manager and I'm staff of Planning Commission. So tonight, we have one applicant who, in the opinion of Planning Commission, is his first choice, and that is Bruce Weber. We are interviewing to fill the position of Grace Bergen, who resigned earlier this year. So this position would fill her term, which would expire in July of 2025.
Thank you, Sandy. Bruce, why don't you come on down? Take a seat.
I'd like me to go.
Somewhere between Neil and the end of the table.
Okay, I can let that work. I'd like to hear.
Alright, Bruce, I think you know everybody.
Oh, yes, I believe so. I met him formally, I guess, but.
Nice to meet you.
But yes, I, yes, I do believe I do. Alright.
I'm gonna ask the, uh, the three questions we have, and then, uh, then we'll go from there. You ready?
Yes, sir.
What, what strengths or skills would you like to bring to the Planning Commission?
Okay, uh, I retired, uh, a forty-three-year banking career in 2019. Um, I was a commercial lender for, and team lead for many, many, many years. And one of the things that we did was, you know, we collect information, you ask questions, you analyze the information, and then, you know, you make a lending decision. That's, you put it all together and come on, and come up with the right answer, hopefully. Um, I worked with developers on the financial side for many years during that time. And get their projects to, to finish off or whatever. And I think this gives me some insight into the planning process. And I've served on numerous boards over the years. Um, since I retired, uh, four years ago, um, I focused my attention on community service. And I currently am Vice Chair of the Lake County Budget Committee, I'm Vice Chair of the Fair Board, and I'm past President of Springfield Rotary. So I am, well, lots of people in Springfield, and that's part of it. Happy to answer any questions.
How do you think the work of the Planning Commission improves our community?
Um, well, I, I mean, the Planning Commission, uh, improves the community, in my opinion, because it's, it is the citizen oversight. Um, for all the things that go through, from, you know, transportation and infrastructure and all those things, that's what the Planning Commission, that they are the citizen involved with that. And I think that really ensures that Springfield residents have a voice on what, what happens in Springfield. Um, and I, I think this helps build trust between the citizenry and the city.
If you could make one positive change in Springfield, what would it be?
Well, I don't really have any specific focus or agenda. Obviously, my goal is to learn a little bit more about what's going on in the Planning Commission. I watched a couple of meetings online. But then again, to help to figure out what, what needs to be done and where I can help out in that regard. I'm in the community a lot out and about in lots of different organizations and going on like that. And, uh, and I think one of the best things that you can do is, is be informed. So when you are out talking to people, you have answers that you can give them. It's just, instead of just going, well, that doesn't work very well for that, then you can, you know why it's working that way, and you can explain to them why it is that way. And that was one of the, one of my reasons on the Lake County Budget Committee. The choice here, they're wasting money, they're doing whatever. Well, you spend, I spent three years on the Budget Committee now and watch where the money goes and how they do things. And so I can feel like I can make an informed response to somebody asking questions.
Hey, uh, do you have any questions for us?
No, like I said, I watched the, uh, last week's meeting and a couple of ones online. I know they meet on Tuesdays and.
You passed, that was a secret, you know, do your question.
Yeah, I did, I did not meet on Tuesdays, yeah, twice, twice a month.
Oh, perfect. Um, we are gonna talk about what we wanna do, and then somebody from the staff will get back to you. So, thank you so much for coming in.
Okay, I'll be happy to ask or answer anything else if you'd like.
We want, we want that shortened. Yep, alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our only interview. Um, and Sandy, how many openings do we have in the Planning Commission? Okay. Alright, folks. And I think we went out, that was our second time we went out, right? We've been out twice for planning.
Yeah, he extended the.
Okay. You guys good? Good? Good, 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 good. Okay, there you go. Thank you so much.
Catch you before he leaves.
Alright, next one is the Springfield History Museum Advisory Committee. Maddie?
And do you want to bring Michelle back in?
Oh, we should wave, thank you. He's left.
We should see how long she'll stay out there.
He's out of control.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Um, I am Madal Nagro. I'm the curator at the Springfield History Museum, and I am the staff for the Springfield History Museum Advisory Committee. And we had, um, one vacant position, uh, for the term expiring for Adam Howard. And we also had Megan England expiring as well. Um, Council went ahead and allowed for Megan to be, uh, directly, uh, reappointed. So we do not have Megan here tonight. Uh, two applications were received, one from Mahala Radel and one from Megan Chittle. Megan Chittle is not able to be here tonight. Um, but we have Mahala Radel here. And so that would be for a term that, it would be a full term with an expiration date of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Perfect. Alright, any questions? Alright, I think we're ready to go. Mahala, come on down. Hello, we're, we're gonna do a round of introductions real quick, um, and then we'll go and get started with your questions. Why don't we start with Victoria and we'll work our way?
Hi, Victoria. I am, uh, City Councillor for Ward Five, so kind of in the middle of Thurston and, um, middle of Springfield. Michelle Weber, Councillor for Ward One, Gateway and, uh, North Springfield.
Steve O, Commissioner for Ward Two, which is sort of five-five to Tenth Street.
Beth Blackwell, Ward Four, and it's smack dab in the middle industrial kind of area.
You know, I said Commissioner of Mid-Council.
You gave yourself a promotion. President.
At least I'll get paid.
Right?
Yeah, yeah, I want a raise.
I'm Cory Rodley, she heard pronouns. I'm in Ward Three.
Sean Van Gordon, Mayor, and apparently on the second interview, we've totally lost control.
Go Thurston. I'm Ward Six.
Don't be tested, then. Are you ready for the questions?
Yeah.
What strengths or skills would you like to bring to the Museum Committee?
Um, so I have a background in history, um, and I did actually used to work at a small town museum. So I am pretty familiar with kind of the, both the rewards and the challenges that can come with, um, work in that kind of environment. Um, I am fairly new to Springfield. Um, I actually, I have a here and there kind of relationship with, with Oregon. I, I went to high school in Eugene, um, but then I left after high school and didn't come back until um, this last year. So I moved, um, back into, moved into Springfield. Um, so I am looking for ways to get involved in the community, ways to meet people, ways to sort of bring my skills to, um, to a community initiative. So I currently work in a library, um, as an archivist. Um, so I've got some experience, um, and skills with that. I've got experience with, um, community outreach, with exhibits, um, with all of that kind of thing. So, um, that is really kind of what I'm hoping to bring.
How do you think the work of the Museum Committee improves our community?
Um, I am very passionate about the value that history, um, cultural engagement, um, knowing about the place that you live, um, and where, you know, where it came from, basically, and, and who are the people here and who are the people that have been here. That, that enriches life in a community. Um, so that is, I think, uh, you know, where I see value in the work of the museum. Um, and subsequently then, the, the Museum Committee, which is, you know, working in tandem with the staff of the museum, working on outreach, um, initiatives and, and education and getting the community in the door and providing those services. So that's what I feel like is very, uh, important.
If you can make one positive change in Springfield, what would it be?
Um, I am still definitely learning about Springfield. Um, I, I have heard so many great things about it, even in just the few months that I've been here. Um, you know, seeing things like the block party and the revitalization of Main Street and, um, kind of bringing, bringing that, um, pride and engagement, um, with the city. Um, so I don't, I guess I don't know for, for sure right this minute, um, what I think might, might change, except that I do think it's very important to see that kind of initiative and that kind of forward momentum keep growing, um, and keep, you know, keep up that engagement. Don't think that the work is done. Um, yeah.
Great, thank you so much. Do you have any questions for us?
Um, I guess I am kind of curious about, uh, I don't know what the relationship is with you all and the, and the History Committee in particular. Um, yeah.
Does anybody wanna take this one? We're in the spot for Civica. Civica, go ahead.
Yep. So, welcome, uh, and you've got an amazing background. I had to, have to tell you, it's pretty, very impressive, awesome. So, like, like all other committees and commissions, they serve basically at the pleasure of the council. And that their staff liaisons to each one of those, those committees and commissions that, uh, provide that resource to the members of those committees and commissions. And typically, we try to have all the committees and commissions, uh, report to us on an annual basis as to what's, you know, updates, what's going on, and, and any issues they've been encountering. Um, so there's not a ton of contact, um, but there is typically a councillor that is appointed to each one of the com- committees and commissions that will try to make those meetings so they can report back to the council. There's one right there. So, yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty, pretty, um, it's a good, good mix. Hope that answered your question.
Perfect. Thank you. It was so nice to meet you. Um, we're gonna talk about what we wanna do, and the, uh, staff person will let you know.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Alright, I'm looking around. I'm seeing head nods, head nods, head nods.
We're good. We'll let staff know how we.
We're not as talkative tonight as one would wanna think, right?
Yeah.
Alright. You got everything you need, AJ?
I do.
Okay.
Appointments are scheduled for December fourth, just as a follow-up for staff and people in the building.
If you stoned on that, then we would have really had to call.
They can attend the meetings between now and then.
Yeah.
Alright. Uh, next one is Arts Commission Interviews. Mindy?
Good evening, everyone. Mayor and Council. Uh, so my name is Mindy Linder. I am the liaison to the Springfield Arts Commission. This evening, you will be interviewing one candidate for two vacancies for membership on the Springfield Arts Commission. Uh, the Commission currently has two positions open. One is due to a term expiring of our current chair, um, who is terming out, Summer Young Jelinek, at the end of this calendar year. And one position remains vacant because it was not filled in our previous recruitment. Um, so we do have one applicant, Chris Rohaly, Rohaley, for, um, two vacancies. So, we asked that you interview this candidate, um, and determine, we believe that the candidate is eligible and qualified to serve on the committee or on the Commission, and we ask that you report with the interview. So, Chris, you're up.
Yeah, let's do it. Hi, everybody. How's everyone tonight? I don't think I've ever met a mayor before, so that's pretty cool. Better be on my best behavior.
I didn't laugh at that.
I didn't.
Third interview, and thankfully authorized. Could you help us with your last name?
Rohaley.
Rohaley, okay. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you guys.
So, Chris, we haven't met, um, but you are, we're gonna go around, let people introduce themselves, and then we'll ask a couple of questions.
Okay.
So, Victoria?
Uh, Victoria Doyle. I am in Ward Five, up by Thurston. Michelle Weber, Ward One, Gateway. Springfield.
Michelle, Steve O, Ward Two, five-five to Tenth Street.
Okay.
Beth Blackwell, Ward Four.
The words were four.
In the middle industrial area.
Okay.
Um, forty-second to kind of twenty-first.
So, you're, I'm in your ward, okay.
Uh, Cory Rodley, she heard pronouns. I'm in Ward Three, which is kind of also up the middle. Uh, like Tenth Street over to Twenty-first Street. We share Twenty-first Street. Um, so, Mackenzie Willamette, Willamalane, I don't write up in that area.
I'm still in Ward Six. First area, everything basically east of fifty-eight.
Okay, Joe.
Alright, so what strengths or skills would you like to bring to the Arts Commission?
Lots.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, not, not to sound overly confident, but I have a lot to bring. Um, I've been a local business owner here in town for twenty-five years, uh, Area Fifty-One Tattoo. I brought a worldwide syndicated television show. I created it called Epic Ink on A and E. And, um, I kind of birthed that from, from the beginning, and I brought that here to town. Um, and that was viewed by three million people a week for almost two years. Um, so I'm especially proud of that, not only to feature art and, you know, create something from, from the roots, but to feature Springfield heavily in it. Uh, we filmed at the M Stadium and all over town, um, the sculpture out here, the Welcome to Springfield boat sign, I think we're jumping in and out of it. Talking from cops, you know. Um, but I, I really tried to involve a lot of local businesses, wear, wear apparel for local businesses and stuff. And once I did that, I realized, this was in two thousand fourteen and fifteen, and I realized that I wanted more. I wanted to do more with my city, because I was especially proud of my city and featuring it and having everyone see it on national TV from here to Australia to Brazil, you know. Um, so I started doing more and, um, I started coaching a lot of youth sports and donating my time for a lot of youth activities. My, my son, uh, is a little athlete, so, um, I did that. So I've, I've made a lot of connections in this town, not only from tattooing ten thousand people in this town, from being the very first tattoo shop and the last one still standing, still standing at all of them. But, um, all those connections, all the parents of all the children I've coached for the last decade, almost fifteen years of coaching youth sports. So I pretty much know everyone in this town, except any, I don't know any of you guys. As far as I haven't tattooed you guys.
Tattoos all over.
But that's gonna change. So, um, I, so, basically, I feel like I, I have a good pulse on this community from the younger generation, um, from tattooing them all and seeing what's popular with them and what they're in touch with and the culture that they have, all the way to the older generation that I've been tattooing for years and, and that kind of thing. So, um, I feel like I bring a really good connection to the community in that aspect, so.
Right. How do you think the work of the Arts Commission improves our community?
Um, okay, I'm gonna be honest. I didn't even know this existed. I didn't. And that's why I want in. Okay, um, I knew nothing about Arts Commission. I know my friend Bane that paints the Simpsons murals everywhere, you know, um, that was about all I knew. And a friend of mine sent me the link for this vacancy. And they said, man, with all the people you know and the connections you have and the art background you have, you'd be really good at this. And I read about it, and I was like, wow, this is amazing. I didn't even know this existed in this town, you know? So, I immediately said that I wanna be a part of this. So other people, and, and I have, like I said, I know this town, and I know everyone in this town. And everyone I talked to didn't know that this, this commission existed. And I was like, well, I'm gonna change that. You know, I have a huge social media presence from the television show and stuff like that. Um, and I wanna utilize what I have and what I've built to bring awareness to programs like this and the historical one. And I, I didn't know anything about these. And, and I, I've had a business right down the street from you guys for twenty-five years. You know, so I feel I can make a huge impact on bringing awareness in this community to programs like this, especially the art program, because I have, I have that connection in the art field, so.
If you could make one positive change in Springfield, what would it be?
I feel like I'm constantly trying to make positive changes in Springfield. I do. Um, right now, I'm actually currently right next to Area Fifty-One Tattoo, there's a vacant lot. And I'm putting in a turf, uh, football field. Um, and I'm starting a nonprofit for underprivileged camps, because with all these years of coaching, we had to turn away so many children that couldn't afford to play. And these kids, in turn, get in trouble, you know? They don't have sports to look up, you know, to get involved with and stuff. And, and I see these kids, they're great athletes and they're great kids, and before you know it, they're doing drugs and they're getting in fights because they don't have something like that. And this is just one example. I don't mean to be long with it, I'm sorry, I'll make it quick. But I, I saw that problem, and I had this vacant lot next to me. And I decided, you know what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna build a field there, and I'm going to offer free clinics and free lessons. I have lots of connections with Oregon Duck players and other, other guys like that, that have tattooed. And they've all, or they've all signed on, and they're all willing to teach free clinics and, and kind of keep these kids focused on sports and out of trouble and athletic exercise and that sort of thing. So, things like that, I'm constantly trying to do in the community. Um, I'm in the middle of that right now. Um, I teach, I teach tattooing, and I'm looking into getting grants to help people that can't afford my program. Um, so I'm constantly trying to improve Springfield in my way that I can. And I feel like if I get this position, it's just another way that I can help improve Springfield by drawing awareness and attention to these kinds of committees and getting more people involved with it, so.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, everyone has food, but I don't have any food. No, uh, I'm just, I'm happy to be here, and I hope I can represent, um, you know, kind of a different aspect of, uh, a committee that maybe you're used, you're used to and stuff like that. I feel like I can bring a lot um, to the table for this. And I'm pretty passionate about it, so I'm excited. Yeah, so thank you guys for having me. I appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. Alright. Alright, I've seen a lot of head nods. So, I.
Staff will let you know what was said.
You guys are regular comedians tonight. That was our last interview for the evening. Next, we're gonna move to Housing Diversity Tax Exemption with Katie Carroll.
I just wanted to comment that I just thought we had a great collection of folks who had applied. Even the person who didn't show up, it would have been a tough choice, depending on how, and I just think we had a good round and.
Yeah.
I'm surprised. I, this time, it was, I wonder if it'd be interested, since there's two positions on that art.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll pick them again and see if we can't get them here. Katie, here. You're up.
Well, hi, everyone. Uh, I have to follow. Okay. Uh, so I'm Katie. I'm the city's housing analyst. Uh, tonight, we're going to be okay, that's transition. Um, talking about a property tax exemption that the council's been considering, that we're calling the Housing Diversity Tax Exemption, or HDPE. You may also know this as the multiple unit property tax exemption, or MTP. Um, and I do just wanna really quickly acknowledge that this has been a coordinated effort between community development, economic development, and the foundations. And in particular, I think, um, Ally Camp and Nathan Bell were here tonight, um, for their support of and help with putting this together. So, um, I'm gonna be brief on backgrounds, since the council's been talking about this for a while, but there is more general background at the very end of your packet tonight, as well as linked in, um, prior council packets, which are linked on page one of your memo. Uh, but basically, this is a property tax exemption to incentivize development of new multiple unit housing near transit and in core areas. The idea being that by exempting property taxes for the first several years of a building, more projects will pencil and we'll see more housing of this type than we would without this tax exemption. Uh, the city needs to decide how many units, uh, minimum would be required for a project to be considered multiple unit under this exemption. Springfield has chosen, um, five units minimum. And then the city also needs to identify the geographic areas within which the exemption would be available. And under state statute, those have to be within a quarter mile of transit. Um, so council has previously directed staff to include the areas on the map in the tax exemption. Um, so.
No, one second. Just a quick question on those, those areas. Are those all the areas that are identified that fall within those parameters, or is that just selected and they fall in it?
So, um, council, to my understanding, this was pre my taking this over. Looked more generally at areas of Springfield to include and excluded some gateway, um, not being on there. For example, Glenwood not being on there. And then the.
I don't remember the exclusions.
Um, Sandy, I don't know if you lost features.
It doesn't mean it didn't, it doesn't mean it didn't happen, but I just don't remember providing exclusions to the program as opposed to I thought we were looking at it to see what all areas would be included that, that the parameters are within a quarter mile of the transit system.
Gateway, we always got a ton. Right on the AMX.
I could be, I could, I could be mistaken.
Right. So, um, yeah, we did exclude Gateway because of transportation issues at Gateway Beltline. We excluded, um, further out east on Main Street. In part because in previous discussions, you didn't want to encourage that housing right up next to Main Street.
Main Street, that's right. I remember.
And so this area, this area of Main Street, um, has more mixed use, um, zoning than, um, further east.
Yes.
Uh, and we did not include Glenwood either. We started off not including downtown, but that was padded in partway through. So, this is what, um, we had come up with. The, the one other change happened in processes up at Q Street, that small piece off to the right, um, we added that at your request, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner again, another emotion.
And I think, and, and as my mind refreshes here, which is kind of a kickstart too, and I think we excluded the, talked about the Gateway area, Gateway area, because um, it already has a tremendous amount of traffic and that to further increase the population in that area would even compound that issues. That, that was kind of where we were at with that.
Right. And I think also there's a lot of, um, multifamily in that area already.
A ton, yeah.
So, we're trying to target, um, I mean, if you wanna revisit, we can, but this is where we had gotten to, and, and you had confirmed these areas at your previous meeting.
I just tried to get a refresh. It makes sense. Thank you.
And then the actual boundaries themselves are drawn around plan designations that allow multiple unit housing.
Cory.
And we could always adjust it as we, like, we could do this for a while, see how it works, and if it really encourages it, and then if there are other areas we wanted to target, we could adjust it later on.
Yes. So the one, um, thing to keep in mind with that is with adjusting areas, we may need to go talk to other taxing districts. Again, because it may change the mix of districts that are involved.
Victoria?
With someone who isn't in one of these designated areas, has a great idea and has an opportunity to develop, could they come and say, we'd like to be, you know, we'd like to be considered for this and then have that considered? Or is it like, nope, sorry, you're not in the area?
Um, so, they could be considered, but council would have to change the boundaries of it. So under state statute, we have to designate areas where the exemption is available. And so if they came to council and said, we have a great idea, they would still need to be within a quarter mile of transit or in a core area also. And so if they came to council and said, we have a great idea, they would still need to be within a quarter mile of transit or in a core area also. Because those are other state statute requirements for this.
Right, right, I understand that. But if they met the requirements and they were in one of those areas, I just, I'm trying to figure out why we wouldn't just do it on a case by case basis, but, okay.
Steve.
I'm the Glenwood advocate. I never say very much, but I'm going to start doing that in the future. In this case, I looked at that map and I wondered why Glenwood wasn't included in that. And there must be a reason, but I am curious.
Sandy, do you remember much about why we excluded Glenwood?
I would just stay.
Um, so initially, we were not including the urban renewal districts because those are based on tax increment financing. They had other tools available to support diversifying our housing development. So we initially did not include either urban renewal district. And later, we added in downtown, but we did not have a request to add Glenwood.
There are areas originally that are in Salem.
Yes. I mean, and it's also, um, in the Glenwood refund that plan, there's talk of the vertical housing tax exemption, which this um, tax exemption would be replacing that in the downtown area. So there is policy support for Glenwood. Um, but we haven't ever gotten direction to anything.
Alright.
Okay.
Let's keep going.
Alright, so, um, anyways, it's to incentivize development of multiple unit housing in these areas that council identifies. So, um, council's been talking about this since twenty seventeen. Obviously, there's quite a bit of history here. Uh, most recently, in the spring, council had two work sessions in March. Council directed staff to not cap this program um right now, but to set it up so that the council could institute a cap on the maximum exempted revenue in the future, should it want to. And then council also looked at the um areas under consideration for the exemption and confirmed the areas that should be eligible. Um, and then in the May work session, council reviewed initial staff recommendations for the public benefit aspect um of this program and directed staff to make it more flexible and to allow developers to propose public benefit ideas to the city. Um, and then there were also some differing opinions on council around how many years to offer the tax exemption for. Um, so both of those things will be coming back to tonight. Um, so following those two meetings, staff did some outreach. Um, we reached out to other taxing districts that uh could be impacted by this if the council moves forward with adoption. Those are all listed on the screen. Um, we did not hear back from the smaller taxing districts, but did have a chance to talk to staff at uh Willam Lane, the county and the school district. Um, Willam Lane staff did share some concerns about the potential impact to the district from the exemption. Um, council could pause, change, or end this program at any time based on a request from Willam Lane or another taxing district. Um, which would be a way to address that concern that they brought up. We also talked to um several local developers and kind of three themes emerged from those conversations that you'll see repeated throughout staff's presentation tonight. Uh, the first one is certainty. Developers want a program that's clear and offers certainty about the requirements that need to be met to get approval for this. Um, they want efficiency, so they want an approval process that is quick and relatively simple. And they want flexibility, so they want multiple options to meet the requirements. Some may want a more prescriptive path to approval and some may want a more open one. So staff um took that feedback to help inform updates to the draft program guidelines, which you had seen in a previous meeting. Um, those are attachment two in your packet tonight, and then also to write a draft code, which is attachment three of your packet. Um, these are written with staff's recommendations for the various policy considerations we'll go over tonight. And those are all highlighted in blue, so they're pretty easy to pick out in there. Um, so I'm going to go through all of the policy considerations that we have for council, um, staff's recommendations, and then have some questions for council at the end. So the first one of these um policy considerations is how many years to offer the exemption for. The city needs to um decide how many years someone granted this exemption would receive a tax exemption for a maximum of ten is allowed under stated statute. So, um, the city could uniformly offer this exemption for ten or fewer years or could decide on a project by project basis, how many years to exempt taxes for. Um, in that case, uh, the city would need to adopt criteria to kind of determine how many years on that project by project basis. Um, as I mentioned at your last meeting, council members shared some different opinions on this um policy question. One of those was an interest in limiting tax exemptions of ten years um, to only be for projects that could show they wouldn't pencil but for this tax exemption. So making that analysis would require developers to submit two pro formas, one with the tax exemption applied and one without to kind of make that finding. Um, staff is recommending that the city uniformly offer this exemption for the full ten years allowed under statute and to not require that but for analysis. So returning to what we heard from developers, um, in terms of certainty, this would help applicants know before applying what they would be likely to get so that they could start to evaluate if they even wanted to apply for the tax exemption and then plan in their project around that. Um, looking at pro formas to do that but for analysis is, I learned from talking to developers, pretty subjective. Um, so making a requirement tied to doing a supportive analysis is potentially problematic because it introduces a lot of uncertainty um about who would potentially qualify or not for this. Um, in terms of developers' interest in efficiency, if the city were to do a pro forma analysis, we'd need to hire outside expertise for that, which would add on to administrative burden. It would add on to cost for developers and then on to application timelines. Um, and then other reasons staff's recommending this is that all the other cities that we looked at with this tax exemption offer it for ten years with the exception of, I believe, Salem wants um granted one for fewer than ten years. So this would make Springfield kind of in line with other cities' programs and um, more competitive when developers are sort of looking around deciding where they may want to build a project. And then council can always, as I mentioned, change this program in the future. So staff's recommendation is to kind of start wider, see if and how it works and then um narrow in the future if council is beginning to meet its goals for the program. Any questions about this one or should I?
Do you want us to talk about them as we go through them or do you have, are the questions gonna prompt us up the?
I think my preference would be to just get through and then discuss for the council once, but if they're like clarifying questions.
You have any, any questions, go ahead, Joe.
So, I would be curious to any of the uh requirements to apply for or be part of this program, any of the things that you're asking the developers to do. Have you looked at the costs associated for those additional requirements? Those would be upfront costs, which then themselves may hinder what we want to do.
In terms of like a pro forma analysis? Um, yes, off the top of my, I haven't broken it out specifically, but I've looked at application fees. And I will say just off the top of my head, that application fees are quite a bit higher for cities that require that analysis like in the thousand dollars plus more in application range. And I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, that um some cities have said that they're not even recouping the cost of having that analysis done. Um, so yeah, there's
So that's something I think may deserve some more delving into before moving forward.
If the council is interested in doing uh or having that but for analysis, then yeah.
It's like, it's kind of like inviting ten people to the party, but if we say hey, are you ten? It's a, it's a B Y O B and then start telling them what brand to bring, then, then we may not have ten people show up.
And I think that's the reason staff's recommending not going down that path of doing that analysis.
Victoria.
Okay, this is gonna sound, maybe sound crazy, but why are we doing a complete ten years at zero percent tax? It just feels like that we're, that the taxpayers that are currently paying taxes are subsidizing this. And I don't know why we wouldn't do something where the, you know, in the first year it's zero and in the second year it's ninety percent. And at the third year, it's eighty percent, to where they're eventually at the end of the ten years, they're boom, now they're paying what everybody else is, you know, their tax rate. As opposed to just getting it free money for ten years. I mean, I get that we want development, but I just got my tax bill and it's six grand and I'd love to have some sort of an exemption for you know, paying year after year after year. So I guess that's my question is, why does it have to be the full ten years at zero dollars?
So, um, I think the idea behind this exemption is that it's incentivizing development that wouldn't otherwise happen. And so the city would still, and all the other taxing districts, would still be collecting tax on the land that's not exempted in this tax exemption. So it's like if the improvements weren't built at all. And so the idea being, it's kind of this short term trade off of not getting revenue or however long we're exempting taxes and in return getting buildings built that may not otherwise have been built. And so getting kind of the long term improvement value when they come on to the tax rolls. In terms of the specific structure of, could we do a hundred ninety, eighty, seventy, sixty, fifty? Is that kind of what you're talking about?
Just asking.
Um, I don't know if that is allowed under statute.
Okay, and I wondered about that. And then are you saying that the other taxing districts are on board? Or are we gonna be the only ones giving, I mean, like what about M W, is it M W M C do? No, that's that's right, that's right, that's
Um, so in order for this to apply to the whole tax levy and not just the city's share, we need fifty one percent of the tax levy levy to sign on, which is basically the city, um, the county in Willam Lane or the city in the school district. Um, school district staff have indicated that um their board is likely to be supportive of this. As I said, Willam Lane has some reservations, but we do have a follow up meeting with them. Um, and so then it would apply to everyone if we get that fifty one percent.
Okay.
Okay, let's keep on going.
Okay. Um, so this next policy consideration is around stacking of incentives. So council had previously directed staff to not allow developers that receive CETA's um S D C payment assistance to also qualify for this tax exemption. So in other words, to stack those two incentives. Um, multiple developers did ask the city to reconsider this and staff is now changing its previous recommendation to recommend that the city conditionally allow stacking of these two incentives. So in order for a developer to get both CETA's S D C payment assistance and this tax exemption, uh, projects would need to be four or more stories. Uh, so this is a question that's really only applicable downtown where the urban renewal district boundary overlaps uh, the boundary for this tax exemption. And so returning to those themes again, um, in terms of certainty, structuring the conditional allowance like this would be helpful for developers. They could easily see upfront if they would qualify for one, potentially qualify for one or both of these um incentives. Other reasons staff's recommending this is market conditions are really difficult right now. Developers are facing high costs to develop. So allowing stacking of incentives kind of recognizes that and making it conditioned on a building being four or more stories is also recognizing that there's generally a higher cost for development of mid and um high rise. And then other reasons staff is supporting this is downtown is, as you know, mostly one to two story development right now, with the exception of the I don't know if it's the Rivet or the uh, Nathan Walls project. Um, and then the Royal Building, which actually did receive a tax exemption, the vertical housing tax exemption, as well as some uh portable housing subsidies. So encouraging higher density development would help the city both meet a goal of the downtown refinement plan as well as generate more revenue for the district because we would be encouraging these kind of higher value projects that once they did come on to the tax rolls would be bringing in um more revenue for the district. Questions on that? Okay. So, um, the public benefits structure, this is the aspect that council discussed pretty extensively at a last meeting. Um, by statute, projects cannot be approved for this tax exemption unless they include one or more public benefits as defined by the city. Um, at your last meeting, staff presented initial recommendations to council um, and has since refined those based on the direction that we got from council as well as additional research and input from developers. So staff is recommending offering three options uh for developers to choose from to meet this requirement of the exemption. Um, and I'll go through each of those now. So the first option would be a clear and objective criteria. Um, so it's basically a list of different categories of public benefits with very clear minimum standards developers would need to meet. Um, they would pick two public benefits to include in their project if at least one of those met list A criteria or three public benefits if all of those met list B criteria. And list B items are generally lower cost and or lower effort. Um, so how we put this together is we took the list of public benefits that you saw in May. There were some additional ones that uh weren't developed yet that council said we want to see those included too. As we added those on and then sort of went through all of them and identified categories that lent themselves to a clear and objective review and included those in this option one. For categories that um were more subjective, those are still included in the draft guidelines. They're just under option three, so I'll get to that. Um, so the categories available under option one, obviously shown on the table on the slide. This responds to developers' interest in having certainty. Um, it would really be helpful for developers wanting to know upfront some clear minimum thresholds to meet for a project in order to be approved for this exemption. Um, it would allow developers to evaluate again whether or not they would want to apply for this and to begin planning their project, including public benefits early, which is something that uh we heard from multiple people would be helpful. In terms of efficiency, since it's a clear and objective review, it would be straightforward, a lower administration effort. Um, there'd be less back and forth between city staff and developers to try and understand the expectations. And that could translate into cost savings for developers as well. Option two here is a fee in lieu. So instead of directly including a public benefit in the project, a developer would pay a fee to the city. The city would use those funds to increase ADA accessibility of our public facilities by completing projects like curb ramps. Um, these are all identified in the city's capital improvement program already. Um, and this would be a ten percent fee of the total amount that a developer would receive in as, as an exemption uh, which they could either pay upfront with a discount or pay over time uh delayed so that there would be a period for the project to stabilize. Um, this essentially is the same benefits as option one in terms of certainty and efficiency uh with potentially even faster decision timelines since there would be very little for the city to review. And then option three here is really responding directly to um council's direction at its last meeting and to what we heard from developers where, you know, some people want a, I guess it would be the safer, like clear, objective pathway and some may want to take on more risk to propose something novel or um kind of interesting for the city to review. And so, um, we took all of the categories that you saw last time that didn't really lend themselves to clear and objective review there under this option three with some examples. So a developer could propose public benefits as part of their project that fell under this or something else entirely for the council to consider. And the guidelines include a set of discretionary criteria that you would be able to use to evaluate projects.
Sure.
Quick question on the, excuse me, on the, uh, I, I, I like this, um. But it allows for flexibility, a lot of flexibility, which is great. So who's, who's the one that says that'll work?
So what the guidelines currently have is a set of um criteria that are discretionary for the council. So it's sort of um a set of items that you would use to weigh a benefit to see, is it sufficient? Is it a public benefit? Um, is it something that staff could, you know, monitor over time? So that is how the council would kind of weigh those proposals.
So we would, we would see those, the ones that come, get to this level saying, hey, we want to act, uh, we want to, uh, we want to go with proposal under option three or whatever you want to call it. And that, at that point, it would say, okay, hey, council, we have this one anomaly here and this is what they're proposing. What do you think? And then council could specifically look at that and give a yay and a.
Yes, that gets into my next
Okay.
Point, so. Point. So I don't want to answer.
Oh, that's fine. I I just want, yeah, I just want to see where the decision point is and then who's making that decision because it's gonna, it would be a subjective decision.
Yeah.
Okay. Cory, before we go forward.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that you are suggesting that we keep all three of these options.
Yes, and a developer would pick. So the idea being that option one and two is if you want to take on sort of a lower risk. Easier approval process. Okay.
Are we gonna have an opportunity, sorry. Are we gonna have an opportunity to review in more detail those options? Cause I have some concerns about some of those, but I know that now probably isn't the time. It's just, it's a lot of information for us to deal with. And that's not something that we probably need to take up time tonight with. But if if we do go forward and say, yeah, we want to move with this, I want to know that. I can still talk about those options in one and two.
Yes, so um my idea is to get through these and then kind of open it up for our council. So we could take some direction tonight depending on time that we have. Um, okay, so to councillor Pishanary's point. Um, the next kind of consideration here is the approval authority um for this. So previously, the statute required that council review and decide every application for this program. Um, but the legislature changed the rules for that this most recent session so that council does not have to do that anymore. So staff is recommending delegating approval authority to the city manager or their designee. For applications that meet clear and objective criteria. So that's that option one or option two. Um, so to answer your question, the option three open proposal would still come to council. Um, so what that would look like, sort of review pathway wise, is on the screen here. So obviously, there's kind of a saves saved step for those clear and objective applications. Um, this is obviously really responding to developers' interest in having efficiency. This would really help streamline the program. Um, for legal meetings, clear and objective criteria, uh not having to wait for their application to go in front of council. Um, and council would still see the more subjective applications and staff could. Um, provide updates to council so you would still be aware of if how the program's working, um in case there are changes that the council wants to make. And then.
Joe's got a question.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm just wondering. Now you said that the staff could update us, but I'm just wondering if. Are they, or is staff planning on updating us when we have any projects that are going into this program? Or is it any projects that specifically are option three?
So seeking feedback on that, the way the curtain current guidelines are written is that staff would provide an annual update to council. Um, however, we could provide communication packet memos about each approved application. In addition to that, I think it's a question of, um, you know, what information the council wants to receive when.
See with me, I, the way I look at this would be, um, it's, I mean, I personally wouldn't know what kind of activity we have and. But also being able to, and I I imagine I'll have a off ramp down the road. But I want to be able to see that we have an off ramp to this and when that, when that would be mandatorily kicked in or where. We would have that decision point saying, okay, at what point is, you know, enough's enough. You know, we can only drop taxes for ten years for so many buildings, so to speak, and so much valuation. And then it's gonna start cutting into the, I think, and start harming the city taxpayer wise. So I don't know if that's been considered or not, or if I'm getting ahead of the car on this one.
Um, so there is in the, I can't remember if it's in the guidelines or the code, but there is that off ramp you speak of. To allow council to institute a cap. Um, based on direction in the March meeting, there's not sort of a set time for that. And city attorney's office also recommend not having some kind of automatic expiration because then if council wanted to continue the program. That would get really complicated without having to.
Yeah, I I I support the no, no cutoff point, but at some point. Based on the amount of information or feedback we're getting, it would be something that staff, I think, would should be able to say, hey. This is getting kind of crazy here, council, and so maybe you may consider or you may think about this off ramp.
Yeah, I think an annual report is a really good opportunity for that. Um, but if council is wanting to hear about individual applications, okay.
Yeah, I think we're gonna want more information, more than something in the annual report, especially. Yeah, or something similar to some of the land use application pack, you know, packs that we have where it's just simply a table saying. Here's five things that are going, going live, right? Like, because we're gonna get asked more about this and this program. And so if we don't get that kind of refresher, it's gonna, you know, we're gonna get surprised by something. Cory, go ahead.
Yeah, that's all I was gonna add, and not to get into the weeds, but we already get that, like, weekly development report or whatever that is that says. And if it was just another page to that or whatever that said. What was happening and highlighted that it was part of this program, I think would be, that would be enough for me, but I'm one person, but.
Say, and and if we, you know, when those development reports, if you just have, you know, the ones that have this program or or getting this incentivization. Be vitalized or something that stands out from the rest of saying, okay, this is one of those programs. And that's.
Okay, so not high, so high level, not super detailed, right? Okay.
I think they already say in them if it's an ADU or something, cause I read those and I'm like, oh, that's what's happening here. So if it was something that was like part of the, whatever, we call this program.
Yeah, I think that would be fine.
Okay.
Okay, let's keep going.
Um, okay, so this last policy consideration here, uh staff didn't have a recommendation on. So the council can either um have the exemption applied to just the multiple unit housing improvements. Or could also extend it to include parking for the multiple unit housing. Um, so some considerations there is climate friendly, equitable communities. Implementation means that soon the city will not have parking requirements anywhere in Springfield. Um, so including parking in what gets exempted may incentivize developers to provide it. However, the market may do that anyways. Um, I think we have an idea, but we don't know for sure what will happen there. Um, the other thing that I would share on this is that surface parking, which is what we may expect for most projects coming in under this. Would represent a pretty small portion of value as compared to a full project. So um exempting it, not exempting it, may not be a huge piece of that puzzle. Um, but so anyways, staff didn't have a specific recommendation on this one, but it's a question. But I think I'll just get through the rest of the slides and then we can jump back to that. And then the broader question, which I think gets to your um point earlier, councillor Doyle, is. Does council concur with staff's policy recommendations? And then just quickly previewing next steps, once the council is ready to move forward. Um, the city would need to have a public hearing to adopt this by ordinance and then we would need to reach out to other. Um, taxing districts to formally seek concurrence. So it would apply to the full tax amount and not just the city share. Um, we would need to establish an application fee uh with the Lane County Assessor. And then put together outreach and application materials. So still several steps before we would start accepting applications. So um just turn it back over.
Okay, so let's talk about the parking and then we're gonna go through a couple of these questions and get some, get some head nods or changes. Um, does anybody want to jump in? I'm about this question about parking. Go ahead, Joe.
Initially, when I first heard about this, I'm thinking, are you kidding me? We need to, we need, people need to place park. And I want the streets all jammed up. It's just ridiculous, blah, 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 blah. And I started thinking about with conversations that. It's, it's a market thing. You know, I think i- if a person's developing an apartment complex or whatever. They're gonna need to want to make sure it's full and part of that analysis is on their shoulder to say, okay, am I gonna attract people? With ample parking or am I gonna have less tenants because there's no parking available so they're not attracted to live here? So I, 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 it's spooky to me, but, but I think that may be something that's market dependent. Based on how the property is put together and and how the developer is is gonna do onsite or not onsite. Whether he wants to make, he or she wants to make it a benefit or not, or something that would attract tenants. Or discourage them. And so it's a risk that the developer would have. I don't know, I I I mean, I was really adamantly against. Not allowing or not having a requirement on site parking, but I'm kind of going with let the market decide.
Cory, and then we'll go to Beth.
Yeah, I actually agree with Joe on this. Um.
You say that like.
We do agree, um, because I think that depending on the neighborhood. There's going to be ones that, that people are gonna want to live in places where they don't need the parking. Especially if we look at the downtown area, if we're really trying to do that. And if it's a different. Um, if it's a four story and they put parking in the basement or whatever, I think. It could letting them, let's see how it goes with the market could help to us to get to some diversity in terms of. What the different housing looks like. So I'm, I'm open to just letting that go.
Yeah, that's, I was gonna say the same thing. I think it's instead of requiring it, kind of leaving it to the market, to the area, the.
So just clarifying that um none of us is saying that the city would or wouldn't require parking for exemption. The application is just whether we would, okay, great.
Which can easily. One that they, we may end up wanting to put much parking there, but it's an exemption or not.
Um, right. And I was gonna say, I can check to see, there are some other things like the details of public benefits. That are just in the guidelines rather than the code because the guidelines can be adopted by resolution. So it could be easier to change. So I can see if this is something I could put in the guidelines. So if the council changes its mind and wants to include parking in the future, it may be easier to do that.
Yeah, okay. Um, Steve.
My thinking is in the future, transportation is gonna change. We're gonna go to uh bicycles, walking buses, stuff like that. So the public is gonna get used to less parking out there. This is gonna be part of life. And so health, that's gonna be as big of a problem as we think.
Okay, I think we're ready. I think we're ready for the uh next question. Okay, so any questions about staff recommendations? Now's our opportunity to go back and, you know, say we want to talk about policy. Policy questions or bring something up that was presented. Beth, go ahead.
Um, not so much a question, but I just want to say I I completely agree with the ten year um tax exemption. I think that this is exactly what we need to incentivize um. Uh, developers to come in and and help us with some affordable housing. And I also agree with. Um, the whole adding the, the other stacking with with the SDCs. I think that's a great idea, especially with the climate today with, you know, um, the costs of. Of in, you know, inflation and and interest rates and everything, just anything that we can do to kind of get that going. And especially if, if we can change that at some point, sounds like we can, right? We can. So I think, I think that's a excellent idea. So I completely support that.
Okay, Victoria.
So I, I've always been one to support these type of things, but I think that it's important that we consider that we're not just. Giving you this like bonus. We are taking away money that helps run the, 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 our city. Right? And that is the general fund. So that's just something to keep in mind. I don't know how much it would be, but it sounds like over ten years, depending on what we get. And the other thing was I had several people call me this week about this and their concern was, do we have enough industry in our community? To support all this housing that we want to build. Like, I know we need housing, but are there jobs here that are like high paying rate, you know, wage? Jobs that are going to. Um, so it's, it's like support that, right? Like, it's kind of a balance between the two, right? We need housing, but we also need jobs to do that. Um, on options one and two. You, there was the question of if they put in a certain amount of housing that are a certain amount of units that are at lower cost. Um, as a benefit. Um, my concern was that it stops at the ten years. So these people could get people in and they're paying that rent. And then the second that we, they start having to pay taxes, that person's rent goes up to market rate. And that's a little bit of a concern too. Typically, those type of of incentives are locked in for twenty years or, you know. Indefinite. Um, so that might be something that we need to consider when, if we're gonna make that a benefit. It shouldn't just benefit them for ten, you know, be something that they pay for that ten years. They need to, we maybe want to consider that. What that, what that effect is gonna be to those folks that are getting a twenty and thirty percent. Um, you know, getting a discount on their rent and affording it and then not be able to afford it.
So the taxes are still being paid on the land that's sitting there, right? So we're not really losing money.
Yes.
And it's not being developed, it's not being developed, it's been sitting there. And so, so we're really just banking on. Once those taxes kick in in ten years, they're gonna go way up compared to having nothing there, right?
Yeah, that's a good.
So you kind of gotta look at it as like setting aside for a future larger, much larger benefit. Rather than sitting there and getting nobody to develop there. Plus, we've fulfilled a need for, for affordable housing too. It's just a tool.
No, good, good point. Thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna come the same thing as, as far as nothing from nothing is still nothing. So that's had no effect on the general fund. Anything added to that, we'll collect later. We just don't get to collect it now, but it's still money in the bank, so to speak. But the other thing, as far as rent skyrocketing and all that stuff, the state already has caps on that. You can only rent, this year it can go up by ten point two five percent max. So they already rent costs are controlled by the state. It's probably gonna get worse. Or I should say, get better depend on if you're a renter or landlord, so. But, but that too, uh, so I think, I think that, you know, I've, I think ten years is plenty long. And and I was, I'll even self confess, I was even thinking that five years would be, would be okay, but it doesn't seem like that's too frank.
So um I've got a couple, I guess I got a couple other questions here. So what's the plan with Willamette? I know that that was sort of in, in, you know, are, do you have meetings coming up with them?
So we'll be going to their board um meeting in December just to provide. Kind of some more context around like what is this, where is the council going with it? Um, I think they have the same question about like financial impacts. What does that look like? Um, and providing that information in December.
Your M S D C is just go up?
Yeah, um, but I think the, I think the difference I'm hearing in the conversation is the feedback we've got right now is from their staff, right? Not necessarily the policy board until we get to the policy board level. Then that's gonna, that's gonna work our way through that. The other thing I think that would be valuable to point out to them, um. Would be, again, I want to point out to all of us, I mean, we still have enterprise zones that go through a majority of this community dealing with commercial pro. You know, products. Um, and so even though this one's longer, you know, we sort of treat develop, this will allow us to treat development roughly equally, right? So on one hand, we're taking, you know, incentivizing commercial development. This program's designed towards, you know, uh, housing. Um, I think I'm fine with everything I saw from a recommendation perspective. Like, I don't have any questions about the ten years. That seems like it's in line with what everybody else is doing and then creating some paths for people. So that uh, that, you know, we're only seeing a certain amount of them, I think makes a lot of sense. But Cory.
Um, I just, I know Beth, Beth put it on the line. I also support the stacking. Um, and just, just appreciate that we've gotten to this because I know we had multiple conversations. We all had lots of questions. And this just really seems to be tightening up and I'm excited about it.
So is there any other feedback that you need? Yes, I hear yes to the stacking too. Um, Dave, are we getting it ready for a public hearing?
Um, I think just in terms of like council direction on the particular concern that councillor Doyle brought up. Around um number of years, just clarifying, was that concern resolved?
Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, I'm, I, it's just curiosity, doesn't necessarily have to be a.
Um, well, then, what I'm hearing is that for now, we are not including parking.
Yep.
In the exemption, but I will see if we can put it in just the guidelines and council wants to change that in the future. Um, and then the council would want to see in that weekly update, um, applications in addition to an annual report.
Yes.
Um, and then I think that's all I wrote down that we need to.
And just to, just for my clarification again, you did say that this can be revisited. So if we get into this program and it does have the ten year tax exemption and the areas that we identified. That, you know, this starts, the program starts to take off and we get some interest in it, that we can kind of revisit this. And decide, okay, it's, it's gotten kind of popular or whatnot. We need to maybe dial it down a bit or something.
Maybe put some more sideboards on it.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and then just reiterating kind of the one big thing that would be more complicated to change would be the boundaries. Um, because that would likely require returning to other taxing districts. But otherwise, um, a lot of those changes that are in the guidelines would just simply be an updated resolution.
Quentin, Victoria.
Are those areas chosen by the, the amount of lots that are vacant?
No, they're simply based on plan designation. Um, in a previous iteration, staff had done some analysis of redevelopment potential. But we decided to not do that this time, given just, you know, there's a lot of emphasis on infill now. And I think it's sort of. And I think it's sort of hard for staff to determine, you know, what is a redevelopable lot. I mean, obviously vacant lots are one thing. Um, and so leaving that to the market and developers to determine.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I guess the other, the other, the other question I had is, under the programs that's written, do we have the ability to pause it?
Yes, I would think so. I'll double check the city attorney's office, but I would assume that we could just stop collecting applications for a period of time.
Yeah, that would be a place we would want to clarify. That way we're not stuck with the like, hey, if we want to slow down, right? We have to repeal the whole thing and start over again. The ability to pause, I think would be helpful. And I'm sure it's in there.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that it is.
Thank you for all the work.
Yeah, thank you.
We're almost there.
I'm excited about it. Sometimes, in response to um councillor Doyle's question about the ten year limitation on the lower rents. Um, I think going beyond that could be problematic in terms of enforcing it because we wouldn't have the exemption to under. Um, so, I mean, we can look into it, but I'm thinking that that's probably not an option to require a longer term investment unless there's some other kind of public money tied to it that would have a longer exemption.
Okay.
Or longer. Supportability period.
Gotcha.
Okay. Um, and how long before we'll see that at the public meeting?
Um.
I know you have to go talk to Willamalane in December, right?
So I would think early.
Okay, sorry. All right, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last work session item. I'm gonna adjourn the work session and then we will reconfigure the room for executive session.